And I'm just going to ask you to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this is always an exciting meeting because it's the meeting right before school begins. And as is typical, we toured the facilities. We went to all four schools before the meeting just to look at all the improvements over the summer and just make sure everything is ready to go. And we're happy to report that it was a great tour. And there were a substantial number of capital improvements throughout the summer. And the buildings look great and they're ready for our students. And I think they continue to, you know, look better and better. There's also an increased amount of outdoor space, which is definitely worth noting that I'm sure will be used in all the schools for lunch, but also in classes and all kinds of ways in which we can get kids outside. Also, I think I just want to, you know, state that there was just an incredible amount of work done over the summer around professional development, around everything from technology to curriculum to, you know, just planning. So we appreciate all the work that the administrators did this summer, as well as our teachers and our staff. Because even though, you know, many of them had a lot of the summer off, they were here and engaged in many different ways. And it's incredible amount of professional development that gets done during the summer. So we definitely appreciate that. So with that, just want to move to item four, which is public comments. So this would be a time when anybody has any comments they'd like to address the board at that are not on tonight's agenda. If anybody is here tonight and has comments to make, feel free to raise your hand and be recognized. Okay, in the back row on the left, yep.
I have a question. I need to see if I can like come through the district when I'm going to first or when I'm going to third. And then I just want to get a clarification from you. I know that silent lunch was originally supposed to be happening. That has changed. Yesterday I got an email from Holy Hill stating that, well, saying that basically saying that kids get off during lunch and then when they're done eating, they can put their masks on and speak more freely. So I do not understand what that means. Is it truly not a silent lunch? Are they going to be sold by town? Are they going to lose three sets of time if they don't listen to their school? Wow. I just want to know exactly what that means to be silent. Based on the launch.
So thank you for the question. And it is not going to be a silent lunch. We're going to tell kids, talk to people who are in your perimeter. And it's exactly like a regular lunch. We don't want kids screaming across the room to somebody else anyway. So keep contained to the group that kind of surrounds you and your perimeter for conversations. The whole putting your mask on if you are, I suppose, when they're going outside. If you want to be talking to a friend, you don't have to limit it to the people around you when we're masked.
Okay, just a comment about when they're done eating, they put their masks on and speak more freely.
More freely, just means, right. More freely means not...
Obviously if they're at lunch, it's only if they're ready to go outside so that's what you mean.
Yeah. So to quell any fears, they're not going to be silent at lunch. They can talk to the kids around them, for sure.
So if others want to address the board, now's the appropriate time. I'll just go through just a couple of quick protocols just on how we conduct, you know, this part of the board meeting, just so they understand it better and hopefully, you know, we can have an opportunity for anybody that wants to speak. First, anybody's welcome to speak. We absolutely want to hear from the community. And if you have anything on your mind, you know, feel free to share it with us. We ask that you just identify yourself by name and by address and that certainly that we don't discuss district personnel or students by name because that's just not appropriate in public session. If there are any matters regarding that, then there are other ways, of course, to address it. And then we have a three-minute time period just for any comments to be made. And that's really not to try to at all, you know, push down any comments that need to be made, but rather, we do have a, you know, full business meeting to conduct tonight. So that makes the meeting efficient. To the extent that anybody has anything else that is not shared in that three minutes, you know, they should know that they can always contact me. They can always contact, of course, Superintendent Lamia. And we're here for you if you want to communicate in any way. You can also always write, you know, to the board as well. I think just on the topic of masks, after everyone is done speaking, I can certainly also share a perspective of the process that we went through this summer, as well as what the state is up to, and just illuminate anything that I can on that topic. And then again, if you have questions after that, you can feel free to, you know, contact us after tonight.
Sir, one thing, your microphone down there is yours.
Oh, thank you. I'll try this one.
Or it may be fine to just speak.
Yeah, actually. Okay, is that better? Hold on.
You don't need to...
How's that? Is that better?
Yeah.
All right, thank you for letting me. What's that?
You all do they want to mask when you're speaking?
No.
No, because there's a here state requirement for masks in schools, so.
How do you all feel about that?
So I just, I guess, I just want to, in order to close out this agenda, I'm happy to make comments afterwards, but is there anybody else that does want to address us with comments or thoughts, whether it's on masks or any other topic that you have? Because now is the right time for you to be, to microphone, you can just speak from your...
Thank you.
Nicole Viola.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're, I'm pretty sure we're all here for the same thing, which is the masks. And so I guess what we really want, and I know for me, if I really wanted to have more of a conversation about it, and not so much, I don't have any type of planned speech, you know, to throw at you guys. But I guess my, I have, my whole question is, and I hope this will start a conversation and help clarify it, is my question is, okay, if the masks work, right? And we're both standing in a room and you're wearing your mask and I'm not, and I have COVID, tell me what happens? Like, I'm actually want to know, like, what do you think, what happens if you get it? We're doing that. So we're all together and you have a mask on, I don't, I have COVID. What happens to you? For anybody can answer that question. Do you get it? Is there a chance that you get it? Or is the mask 100% effective and you don't get it?
So this isn't the right form to have a discussion back and forth. But to the extent that you want to have a discussion, again, we'd like to have that in other form. This is really the time for comments. You can ask questions. And I'm going to, I am going to go through and sort of give you our thoughts on masking schools and where we are from a process perspective and who we've talked to. So I will go through that.
I'll express myself. I said, here's my, here's my thing as a parent that I'm trying to understand. So if someone says to me, okay, the masks aren't 100% effective and there's still a chance that you can get COVID, right? So if you're wearing the mask, that's a chance you're taking, that's a risk you're taking. If I don't wear a mask, there's still a risk that I'm taking, right? So why can't everybody take the risk they're comfortable with? I feel like I am being forced to not take the risk that I'm comfortable with. The risk that I don't want to take is the risk that I'm being forced to do. And that's the risk that my kids are going to be putting the mask and they're going to have social, emotional, and physical damage on the mask. To me, that's a huge risk that there's a ton of studies, statistics, paperwork on. And to me, that's a really, really huge risk. And I'm being forced to take it. I feel like I'm literally being forced to jump off a bridge. And like, I'm not even allowed to make that choice. And that's, I think, upsetting thing as parents. Like, these are our children and I should be able to say, I want to take, I want my kids to take this risk or I don't. I'm being forced to take the risk that I don't want to take. And I'm not allowed to take the risk that I do want to take. And that's what's really upsetting me as a parent is I have no, I have no choice. I have no choice to put my kids. So I just like, I don't know, if you guys are parents, whether it's masks or not, like, even a year from now or five years from now, if it's not even masks, it's a whole different topic. And if you felt strongly about something from your child and you felt like your hands were tied, that would be extremely upsetting. So like, I feel like even the people who are, you know, pro-mask, they understand and are afraid and they know everybody's into what they want to do. But if they're not understanding the bigger picture, like, no one is, that it's just, it's the right to choose. Like, I'm just supporting everyone. I'm supporting people who put their kids in masks. They should be able to put their kids in masks. I shouldn't. And so for me, I don't have the stats statistics. I'm not that girl, I'm a common sense girl. And I'm just here to express myself, but like, this is, this is what we're all feeling right now. So like, I don't know, I just wish you, you know, parents are just like, I want to know how everyone feels and how you can change us.
Appreciate your help. Is that probably?
Hi, I'm Amy Quinn, I'm a third grade on Stone Road. I have three kids, one nine, one six, and one deaf. I agree with Nicole, I think masks should be optional. I don't, I haven't seen any data yet from you guys or anyone saying that masks work. We all know the statistics, you can look at the data and see that it's very low risk for kids. So I, that's why I'm here to go say it should be optional, and that's my view.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Go ahead.
So my name is Younghee Han. I live in Philly. I have a very, very different perspective on masking the children. I have three children in the district on...
Can you speak, can you speak up a little bit?
So...
You could also use the microphone.
So, so I have three, I have three children in the district and I have a very different perspective.
I have a very different perspective on masking the children because my, my three children have very distinct needs. They're, they're three very different children. One's going into Wampus, one's going into Crittenden, and one is continuing in Crittenden. My youngest child, he's deaf. And he, he's deaf, right? So he does not, he's not eligible for a cochlear implant. And so he, so there's a lot of training that he has to do to read lips when he's, you know, so a lot of, I'm at a loss of words of what to use. But basically, he has, he has other ways to help him obtain the information that he's unable to do otherwise with two hearing ears. And so for, while my older son, he might be fine in a mask. Or my, you know, my middle daughter, she might be fine in a, my younger one. Being in a mask is really, really affecting him educationally and emotionally. He has this, he's really unable to hear. He gets very, very close to people to really listen and say, what did you say? I can't hear you. And now he's being told, you need to step back, you know, like, you can't get close. So it's really upsetting as a parent. So I just think that this cloud, this blanket statement of mask your children is a little short-sighted because I feel that each child has different needs. And my, my youngest, he, he's really, really hurting educationally in a mask. My older son, he's actually hurting emotionally. He's depressed. He's, he's been seeing a therapist, you know, privately for the past 18 months because he feels that he's unable to connect with humans now. So, I mean, again, three very different children, three diff, and it's just three cases here. But, but, you know, advocating for my youngest, at the very least, the mask is definitely hurting him educationally.
Appreciate your comments.
I know that we're not doing a back and forth, but I hope that you reach out to me and the building principal about how we can help. Because he doesn't have to be in that situation. We have other things we can do about.
Okay. Just quickly, to keep that on that really quick, like, and, you know, I heard her email so I know what my kids are going through, let's think it, like...
All the, all the kids are going through this. I mean, I'm not, I'm sure her son, I mean, that's like a horrible, like, I totally understand the lip and the, you know, party hearing, that's like a whole extreme thing. But all the kids are being affected. So like, to single out and say, I'm going to get, you know, let me get your sign out, hold it out.
Can you speak a little slower and clearer? I have a hard time.
I'm sorry, I get a little fast and I get excited.
Yes, please, go ahead, thank you.
Okay. I feel like the kids shouldn't be singled out. All the kids are being affected emotionally by this.
It's, they're all a different case basis, whether it's depression, whether it's anxiety, whether it's OCD, whether it's whatever it may be. But it's all the kids that are being affected emotionally by this. The little kids who are three, four, five, six, eight, they might, may not be able to tell us this. But we have to keep in mind, all these kids are being affected. So I think we should, you know, not just single out one kid, it's all the kids. And there's a lot of statistics and study that are showing that all these kids are being affected with drugs and depression and anxiety. And like, I feel like we're not doing anything about it.
Is anybody else want to speak?
I'll speak. So, my name is Steve Viola. I just, I guess I'll start by saying that it's kind of, it's very disappointing going. I graduated from Byram Hills. I grew up in Armonk. And I was taught completely different values than what's happening now. And it's very, it's very confusing. And I find it hard to believe that when we ask if there's any data, if you could provide us with any data of efficacy of wearing a mask in preventing COVID, that no data has been provided and you said that you don't have any data on it. So that, to me, is very concerning, not only for the masks, but I don't know what's going to be coming down the road, whether it's a vaccine or camps. I've read stuff about re-education camps or whatever it is, but it's concerning. Just to, and, and I have to say, I really, I really sympathize with everybody's position up here. I would hate to be in your shoes because I know it's not your choice. And you're getting orders from higher powers. My concern is, though, is if we don't do something soon, it's not going to get better. And it's just going to, it's, it's going to get worse. And we know through history of situations where things like this have happened. So at some point, whether you're at the top or you're at the bottom, somebody's got to stand up for what's right. It's just, it has to happen because it could be, it could get really, really ugly. I'd also like to say that I know, you know, I'm sure you're in a tight spot financially with whether it's, you know, following these mandates because you're going to lose financing or insurance purposes or whatever, you know, the reasoning may be. But I'd also like you to consider the fact that, and I hate to talk about statistics in this way because every human life is valuable. But, you know, you're talking from the age group of, you know, school-aged children, a death rate of 350 or 400, say. And you're talking about a population like 40 million or more. And that's, it's really, it's, it's, and like, I don't want this to come out the wrong way because every life is valuable and, and I feel for every parent that, I mean, it's just, I don't even want to think about it. But, I mean, we're talking about a risk that's, that's basically, like, every time I put my kid in the car is magnitudes of order more risky. And, and it's not only that, it's, it's the fact that, like, last year alone, the suicide rate was up. Like, suicide is a leading, is the second leading cause of death of adolescents aged 10 to 17, second leading cause of death. And last year alone, the, the suicide rate increased 57%. Do you know how many children that is? That's, that's 3,500 kids killed, extra, in addition to the, to the, to the normal suicide rate committed suicide. That's 10 times the amount of kids that died from COVID. And I don't think it's a coincidence from all these mandates and restrictions, I don't think it's a coincidence that the suicide rate jumped 57%. So I just want to say, and again, I don't, I would hate to be in your shoes and I really, I really understand you're in a difficult position. But I would like you to consider that fact. And I know it's been said, you don't want to have a death of COVID on your belt. But consider, the death of COVID is not on your belt. Masks are proven to be even effective. So wearing a mask is, it might not even prevent one death of COVID. But there's a chance that 3,500 kids...
We just, we do need to move on.
So you get my point? Somebody's got to stand up at some point, whether you're in the top of the chain or the bottom of the chain. We got to break the chain.
If you have time in three minutes, we'll, we will happily go back.
Is this the only opportunity for comments and questions or once you finish your...
This is your opportunity tonight for comments and questions. But as I said, we obviously are, are happy to have a dialogue after tonight.
I would like to ask...
Can I ask a question around that I've been...
You can ask, like, it's not really human, so just don't expect it to be an answer, but...
So I'll make a comment then. Sure, Lola Gazavoda. So I live at Three Apple Orchard in Bedford. I've been... Sorry. I'm, I've been in this school district for, I have three children. One graduated from Byram Hills already. He's a junior.
I'm sorry, I really do want to, you have air blowing back here. Sure.
Yeah, dogs, I think so. So I've been living in this school district for the last 20 years now. I have three children, one already graduated, she's a junior out of Williams College. I brought her here, she's a junior through Byram Hills, fully vaccinated. I have a second grader also who is not very happy, but she's going to go to school tomorrow and have to wear a mask. So it is very frustrating. It is a school district that we have loved and will continue to love, but it is a situation that we are being put in with no choice. And it's already been called second grade. I have a child who's vaccinated with the intention that she didn't have to go through the mask wearing and what's happening right now, right? My second grader, where does it stop if right now, not even a choice to mask or not mask? What does not happen tomorrow? You know, again, we absolutely love this school district. It's, we pay really high taxes to be here because it really proves to be, you know, very, a great place to be, and, you know, the future of children depend on this situation, right? But right now, the situation is not good. And this is the first time I've ever come to a meeting like this because I need to speak up. And you guys need to hear us. I understand no questions and things like that, but you need to hear us. This is something that is really affecting this community.
I appreciate it, you are, you are listening.
May I ask this gentleman, please, please cover your mask, please sir? Please cover your mask, but you all are covering your...
Anyone else have...
Christina Capellino, again, 13 Cold Drive. I guess we're just trying to understand how we need to follow blanket mandates and rules that are either being stipulated by the CDC or their recommendations to all of the United States and then the governor giving a mandate to all of New York, which is very large. How, when do we take into account our own common sense and our own neighborhood and the own, our, what's going on in front of us that's going to help us make our decisions? Because what happens if for the next five years, they mandate it because there's going to be another variant, another this? Supposedly, these are all health-related mandates. These kids are not being affected by COVID. It is not about their health. And you guys are up there in charge of these different buildings that are housing our children. And we're supposedly following this because of health. It's not about their health, it's not. It's about worrying about if you are the one district to go against the mandate. It's about the insurance. Other schools that are not requiring masks have insurance. Like, there has to be, we have to do more than just follow these rules that are being blanketly given out. We're, we're sacrificing our kids' mental health and physical in other ways because of COVID. And COVID is not killing these children, thank God. So one amazing thing that came out of 2020 was that COVID is not affecting these young kids. So we're not protecting them from COVID. We're causing other problems because we're following these rules that are being given out in a blanket way, spewing to all these people. And that's, we're more educated than that, we're smarter than that, we should be more compassionate than that. And if we're not taking care of our little kids, then none of us should be sleeping, right? And it's just terrible. It's just terrible. And we don't know what to do and that's why we're here. And we know that there's voices in the opposition and we get that. And like Nicole said, parents are right. We should be in charge of our own kids the way we are for every other aspect of their life. And so say, you have to wear a mask. And then my son was telling me last year that he's getting doc time on the playground, which is the only time he had in springtime to wear his mask off at school because of, like, that's another thing. There should be no punishment on these kids where it's related to their outdoor time, where it's their time.
I think we just need to...
Say that again?
We hear your voice, we do, we just need to...
But hearing it is not enough, we need more than that.
I mean, action.
We need you guys to understand where we're coming from.
If anybody that hasn't spoken wants to say again.
I just have maybe a suggestion.
Is there anybody that passes something?
Hi, William Hoffman. I have two children in Holy Hill, first grade, and I live on Isaac. I've been communicating with you all the last couple days and I really appreciate your thoughts and chat. And I'm ready to work, work with you. So I want to make this positive, it's not a bad thing tonight. We want to obviously get to the point where masks are on our children. But, you know, I understand what's, you know, I understand the larger aspect of what's going on. But, you know, basically, obviously with COVID, the high levels here and there's risk, you know, for our elderly population to COVID. And people will suffer. But our children, they're 19, 99.97% survivability from COVID. And the 350 that you mentioned, all had comorbidities. There wasn't a single death of COVID for kids that are 19 or, or otherwise have been widowed or stuff. So given the masks, large scale study published by the SEC, the CDC, NIH, found that masks on children and social distancing, hybrid models, barriers, and the filters are statistically insignificant. There is no benefit. You all know this, actually. I also sent you the quote from the NIH director, who admitted, "Mask mandates are evidence based on anecdotal information." We do not have a single study. Anecdotal. You know, from my communication with Ted, you know, you all provided no studies about the CDC. Hey, you know, that's just very New York. You know, no science support many days, you know, just do it. I mean, look, being that there's no, there's no benefit to our health. I mean, look at us here, we're all sitting here with diapers on our face. I mean, we look ridiculous, we all look ridiculous. And, you know, I got to think the people of Dodgers, I mean, I think it's, it does make no sense. And, you know, look, I mean, there's a, basically, the downsides, you know, for masking children. You know, there's no end date, you know, this going, going this long. You know, we're just opening up all new, you know. I mean, we're going to have to have a part here there. Others, others can do, I can say a lot more, but I'll just, I'll, I'll line up three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken?
Hi, Angie Dotkin. Angie Dotkin, Eats More Placewise. I'd just like to say that I definitely support our right to choose as a man, so I think that's...
Okay, anybody else that hasn't spoken before the...
Good evening, my name is Russell Alonso. I'm a third grader and eighth grader in the district. It'll take two minutes, thirty seconds.
Oh, got it. We appreciate it.
Manual matters for superintendent by member of the line up and unrecognized work that you do, as well as difficult balance, drive immediate peace and getting concerns. It's useful to remind them how much we got long without COVID over the past year and a half, starting with the very origins of the virus. Remember two weeks, flatten the curve. Stay at that home hashtag. Disinfect your patterns and groceries. Wear masks and gloves, don't wear masks. Mask inside, mask outside. Wear two or three masks since one worked so well. Hashtag masks up. Places that match up and off down are hardest and some of the worst outcomes. Or distance equals life, six feet, no, three actually. Stay off the playgrounds, but put COVID patients in the elder care homes. Plexiglas, yes, Plexiglas, no. Hashtag head bats, but keep the mask on. And now the rapid U K and C one point two variant, you're gonna hear about this one in the next few days, highly infectious and vaccine resistant, I guess we'll argue about that for the next month or two. And on and on, wrong about so much, yet so racist and more hysterical each go around. So many of our previous assertions were plain wrong and vaguely so. And that's the question. What might we be wrong about today? What other false assumptions are we operating under as bear witness to astounding failures of leadership on display almost daily now? Undoubtedly, we are shifting the burden of this pandemic onto children. The demographic least threatened by the virus but most defenseless against these unproven and arbitrary mandates. It's normally the adults who protect the children, not the other way around. Keeping that in mind, I urge you to move forward with great humility. I understand the constraints that you are under, the pressures you face from the history on the medium and fearful public. Many of these mandates, however, are not based on empirical evidence. They are merely public health theater meant to soothe nervous moms and dads. So please do not surpass or rebelish upon the state's mandates in any way, and be prepared to loosen and start them as soon as possible. There are costs, trade-offs, and consequences to everything, even when operating with an abundance of caution that weak and is gonna craze, and I'm so tired of hearing. COVID is a serious illness, but it's not the black plague. And we did not bring our children into this world so they might give lives in private adversity, but abundant with caution.
Anybody else that has spoken?
Hi, my name is Susie Ann Perry. I have two children in the district. One is in first grade and one is going into seventh grade. So quite a split there. So I agree with everybody, but everybody's... We're all on the same page. So I'm not gonna reiterate every little point. But what I've noticed as I've worked in Greece on day camp this summer, all the kids were, you know, mostly outside, hugging without a mask. All over each other, they're like hugging, you know, doing activities, doing all different things. And then it's like pulled away from them. It's hard to explain. Now you have to go back into a setting where there are masks almost all day, right? Except, I think, outside. So that's... That plays into the emotional aspect of developmentally. And it's just like, you know, I know some parents who are, wore the mask, which is totally fine. Will say, "Oh, kids are fine. They're totally fine with it. It's not a big deal." But they're not. They're really not because they see that, you know, especially in the summer. I'm sure most of them were not with masks. And now all of a sudden, they're going back to the school environment, and it's like, ugh, it's dreadful. It's really dreadful. And I'm hearing that from my children, like, really? We had the best summer. They want because they had a great experience at camp, but they weren't masked. They could actually, you know, have relationships with children. They know all the kids. And it's like, it's so difficult to know other kids when they're masked up and to even know their teacher, to be comfortable in a classroom setting. So it does affect them, even if they don't outwardly say it. Some people don't outwardly say things, but it truly does. And as we all said, we have statistics, we have data of it. So we can share that with you. I know Jen, you mentioned you're about, you know, letter, like, getting proof, getting that out. We have that. So I don't know if you want us to send that your way or just provide that instead of just saying we have it. I don't know if that would be helpful or where we can take that to the next level, so changes could be made.
So my question is, it's very, very quick. So I remember last year, as we were eagerly awaiting the news with Dr. Lomia, will school be in session? Will it not be in session? What will school look like? I personally listened to every word, every recording that you sent out and video that said... And I really appreciated, I really appreciated all the research that Dr. Lomia and the team did into... You said, "Not only did we talk to parents, we spoke to tons of different types of professionals, pediatricians, psychologists, and such." And I really appreciated all that effort. I'm just, I guess I'm wondering, is, was that due diligence also put on masking the children this year as well? And the pros and the cons of that? And if so, can that also be shared?
I'm glad to ask that question. I think that's actually probably a good segue into just sharing some thoughts. I just want to make a hundred percent sure everybody that... There's nobody that hasn't spoken that still won't speak or wants to speak. Okay, so with that, I'm gonna close out the public comments. And I do want to take a few minutes to address some of the concerns and just give you some some sense of the process that the district went through to, you know, to here we are the night before the school opens. And again, I reiterate that, as frustrating sometimes as the process is, we do, we have a big body of working here tonight that we need to do. And so after that, and after the board has a chance to comment, it won't be, you know, back and forth. But obviously, this is a small community. We will certainly make ourselves available after tonight to extend that we want to rely a lot. So just, just know that we're not, you know, in any way trying to shut down and that we're happy to have... I mean, I think it's clear from my perspective, just listening to all of you, that you come at this with passion for your kids and you care about your kids. And that is one thing I think that we can all say we have in common in this room. Everybody on this board either had kids or has kids at Byron Hills. And so, you know, we all do this because we are passionate about the community and the children who belong with us, the children. The issue that we find ourselves in is that we're involved in a pandemic, and it's complicated. I think we all have to have some level, I do, of humility in terms of trying to make judgments and decisions based on what we know is not totally perfect information. The other thing just at the outset to address is I think that all of the comments on mental health and anxiety are, I understand all of them. I just, by way of background, I was a investment banker for twenty years, and I left the private sector, and I spent the last four years in nonprofit, working at a center at Yale that focuses on child mental health and social health learning. And it's a program that's used across the country and around the world. And so there is no topic that, you know, I care about more than the mental health of kids. And I think we, of course, have to realize that masks are not costless in terms of, you know, everybody walking around with masks, that there is a cost, that you can't see facial expressions, that you can't see emotion. So, so we get all of that. But I do want to walk you through the reasons why we are, you know, where we are. So first and foremost, as well of you know, that this is a statement, and we are a public school, and not only because of funding, but by reasons of law and regulation, I mean, we do need to follow state mandates. So that's first and foremost, you know, one thing to make clear. But I will say that never, in at least my experience at Byron Hills, do we get a mandate from the state and never do the due diligence on our own to really make sure that we believe that it's the best interest of kids. And there are plenty of times in the past where we've not defied the states, but where we've certainly advocated. And, and so I think your question about due diligence that you raised is important. And we did do a lot of due diligence. We were, you know, very busy all summer on it. I think the first thing to point out, and I, and I know we can all, you know, say things skeptically about different levels of government. But last year, there were lots of times when guidance in different organizations were different. And they sometimes conflicted. This time, the CDC, the New York State Department of Health, the Westchester County Department of Health, S E D, which is the State Education Department, they are all consistent on this issue. And to the extent that we want to look beyond the government, which I personally think that is important and should, the American Academy of Pediatrics right now also is saying the same thing. But we also want to have our own local relationships and understand what's going on in our community. And so we did gather, to your point, last year, a group of physicians. We actually added to that group at the end of last year because it was so effective and helpful. And so now we have six. They are physicians from our community. They represent different disciplines. They understand COVID, they understand children. And we also have been regularly in contact with a senior infectious disease doctor at the Yale, the Children's Hospital, and categorically at this point, and again, this is fluid, and so the situation may change, but at this point, they concur with, with the rules that we're getting from the state. Just this week, literally, I was on two webinars. One from the Harvard School of Public Health, the other from a local group of physicians that are associated with Maria Ferrari at Boston Children's Hospital. And on both calls, they were specifically about back-to-school pediatrics and COVID. They emphatically stated that masks made sense at this juncture. Now, one of the main reasons why, just to be clear, is because with no masks, the issue that we will inevitably face, assuming there's any transmission in the community, which right now, in Westchester, there is, is we will have a lot of quarantines. And so the mental health issues of having kids out of school for periods of time and fairly significant numbers, you know, is also deeply, you know, concerned from a mental health perspective. And so we are hoping that the current strategy keeps more kids in school. And then just the last point is that there, we do have a number of children in the community that are medically fragile. And so it's our duty to protect all kids, including medically fragile kids. So I think that we are very open to continuing to have dialogue and to see any data that you have or anything you want to share. As we have, I know that the superintendent has looked at over thirty to forty different protocols that were sent in, and we appreciate that, and we take it all seriously, and we will continue to. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of a sense of the process that we did go through because we've spoken to many physicians as well as attended many specific sessions on COVID in kids in schools. And we're not only talking to government sources, but also to private sector sources. So again, this is not back and forth, but I do want to open it up. If any other board members or superintendent, anybody has any comments that they want to add.
I have a question. This is so for parents, this is not my meeting, this is a board of education meeting. Typically, when I meet with you, you will hear me facilitating the conversation. So just so you know my role here tonight. I understand that we spend a lot of time having ourselves masked outside and washing our groceries, etc., right? When we come to find out that that information is wrong. And there may be a time where they tell us that masking in schools is not good. But I do, but I do need to speak, and I was respectful.
I understand. This is our only opportunity to have you guys all together. So I know you're saying there's certain non-organization.
Actually, I'm going to stop speaking because if I'm not permitted to speak, we're gonna take it from ourselves. This is not what this is about. What I want to say, and I think it's respectful to listen to, because I do spend time with parents listening to the argument of not wanting to have their kids wear masks in school. I care very deeply about that. I don't want us to find ourselves in that situation. I, a superintendent of schools in a state-owned school district in New York State that is governed by the New York State Education Department and the New York State Department of Health, those are my marching orders. But however, and if you've met with me before, we've exchanged respectful dialogue. You know that I am willing to spend any amount of time on my own. I will meet all of you after I finish dismissal at Comen Hill on Friday at four-thirty for as long as you want. We can sit together, we can talk about what it is that we want to share with you. I have connections with the New York State Department of Health, the Westchester County Department of Health. If there is a body of knowledge out there that you have gathered, if you have doctors who will support what you have gathered, a more organized unit and union has to take place to make change. That is the only way change will occur, and parents did it with our school district about state testing. And if there is really evidence out there about the mask wearing, we can do that together as a district. But I am following the orders of the New York State and the New York State Department of Health because that is what I have tasked to do as a superintendent. I could say, "Those are the marching orders, and that's the end of it." I can't tell you how many hours I've poured through studies, and I'm happy to. So Friday afternoon at four-thirty, I will be in my office at the district office. Anyone who wants to come to have a discussion, who wants to bring information to share and ask questions in a Q and A, that you all know you can do with your, anytime. I invite you to do that. This is, this is not a district that doesn't care about how you feel about the kids. I show up in the schools every single day, and it breaks my heart that these children are going to school during the pandemic. I have to keep them safe. And if that is partnering with you to learn something that I don't already know, I'm willing to do that as your superintendent. I've been in this district for thirty-one years. I care about your children. I care about you. And that is as respectful of a dialogue as I could possibly ever have. My children are old. They're twenty and twenty-one years old. They ran freely in playgrounds and classrooms. And if I have to learn something to share with the appropriate people, I will. But I need that to happen spiritually and uniformly. And not people just telling me thoughts and theories or whatever. We need to actually sit down with a bulk of work and look through it together. And you need to identify medical professionals who will be supportive of that bulk of work so that we can work with them. I'd be happy to do that. Thank you. And this isn't my meeting, so I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate it, and I think we all are thankful that our superintendent is willing to have that dialogue. Because again, it's very easy to say, "Well, state mandate, we're not gonna talk about it." But we are obviously willing to listen and to dialogue and to look at studies and to continue to explore anything that you report to us. So that's hopefully clear in these comments, both from the board and from our superintendent. Does any other board member want to say anything?
I'd like to echo what the superintendent has said and what our board president has said. That, you know, we've been here and we're talking, and we hear the passion you have about your children, their health, their mental health, and their education. We do hear you, and we just want you to know that, that, you know, we understand. You know, it's a very difficult time. It's a complex time, as you said, but we do hear you. So I just wanted to make sure you understand that.
This is my twenty-third year on the Board of Education. And this clearly, the last year and a half, two years, has been remarkable. But we are a policy-driven Board of Education. That's how we operate. We operate through policy. We cannot operate based on what somebody you feel about, something you like, dislike. We have to operate based on policy. And to make proper policy, we require data. We require information, and we require it to be submitted to the superintendent, and then we take it from there. Can you provide us with the data you're relying on? Because I have, I have sort of that, I have that as your body. So I'd like to see that. You know what? You're out of order. You've had your chance to speak. Please give me the courtesy.
My question is, would you like to speak?
Something that you're telling your body, but I didn't see it. Where's that? Show me. Excuse me, sir. We have to repeat this again to you? Yes. I didn't see anything. I just had no proof. Yeah, maybe worse. You said you spoke with the politics, it's harder. I can have the names of those out of my eyes.
I think it's time to take the conversation to a further...
They're talking about our children. These are our children.
Stephen, this is not, this is not a program for you. We can have these conversations on Friday at four-thirty, and I'm sure they won't be like this dialogue. Please stick with me about what you plan, and what you want to do, and what we can look over together and achieve together. And I would share with you everything that I know about the Delta variant and every case study and everything that's come about, including most recently from California, from the end of last year with the Delta variant, in a classroom with a teacher who's unmasking kids who are masking to fend for Delta. I could share all that with you. And that's for our discussions for Friday. And if Friday doesn't work for you, I will gladly meet with people again. That is where the back and forth can occur, and we can make some progress. This is not progress. We can't have this.
So with that, we're gonna move... So, okay, so we're gonna go on to the next slide.
And we will.
Okay, we'll pick up the dialogue in its proper place.
You can stay for the remainder of the meeting. You can see what my presentation will be at the end. And if you also, if you can stay, I'd share that same information with Friday's...
Okay, so we're gonna go to item five, which is adopting tonight's agenda. Make a motion to adopt these...
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
Next, I would ask for a motion to approve the incentive agenda for personnel, special services, and for business. I think six point ones, I think one eight point ones.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
All right, so that raises to nine point one, which is a review of the district... All right, so that places to nine point one, which is review of the district-wide safety emergency response plan.
Yeah, this is a review for a little lab.
A little lab, please.
You want this?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm.
Okay. Just a review for the board. Every year, we are tasked with adopting, revising and adopting our annual district-wide safety and emergency management plan. As you know, this was presented to the board on July thirteenth at our reorganization meeting. It was sent out for public comment for thirty days and is now being brought out to the board with no latest revisions to this. However, based on the Commissioner's Regulations and Section eight oh seven and New York State Education Law, there were three provisions that were made to this plan for this year. There was a little minor revision indicating that all confidential building level plans are kept on file at the district office. Secondly, there are responses to an infectious disease emergency, where in March of 2021, we had adopted the protocols for responding to a public health emergency involving a communicable disease for the Byron Hills School District. This plan, as you may recall, was a plan in which we identified essential employees, how we would secure PVE, how we would establish remote learning plans in the event of any pandemic in the future. And lastly, it is an update of our MOU, our memorandum of understanding between the district and our student resource officers as well as security, in identifying what their role is between both district administration as well as school personnel, security, and law enforcement. Thank you.
Thanks for your work. This is Gina. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Gina.
So I think Gina, that things just needs to be updated is probably just what maybe for higher. I think. Has that taken place?
Yes.
So it was getting higher last year. Otherwise, I guess we'd have one chain.
Yes, surely you make that change.
I know. I'm on it.
This is just an action idea.
Yep, it's a good point.
I will move to approve the Byron Hills District-wide Safety and Emergency Management Plan for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two screwup.
Second. All fair. All right, thanks Gina, we all know that this is important. So next we go to new business items. And so firstly, just the assignments. Hopefully everybody had a chance to see them, I can just run through them very, very quickly. So we're all, committee, entire board, finance advisory, Jason Lorrie, and myself, education foundation liaison is Lara Petry, communications to PTSA and the preschool association via emergency safety team, which will be me this year, health and athletic advisory, Jason via Lara, policy committee via Lara Petry, town liaison, Scott Jason, guidance advisory committee, Lori Lara, and then west hub liaison, me, as well as the delegate to the school board association meeting, legislative advocate would be Lara, and then the west hub, I just didn't have because he can be representation would be Jason and myself. So anybody have any questions on that? I appreciate everybody stepping up and doing the assignments, and hopefully it'll be productive here. So what I put down on the board calls, is that as you know, is super.
We need to approve the committee assignments.
Oh, the draft.
We need to get the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Board of Education committee assignments.
All fair. Okay. Okay, so board calls. This is our first discussion about board calls, we don't have to approve it tonight. Although we can, it's a consensus, but we can certainly wait until the next meeting. Hopefully everybody had a chance to read it, it's an important document, because it really does dictate a lot of the focus during, of course, the next twelve months. Jason and I spent time with our superintendent this summer, really trying to think through this. Just to give you a sense, there's obviously a lot going on on the curriculum side, just in terms of implementation of new curriculum throughout our schools, so that's outlined. Even though we're in this pandemic still, we are truly looking forward and trying to think about innovation and ways in which we can continue to get better. That includes everything from visiting colleges to really understand what they, what their expectations are for students, to looking at our schedule, middle school, high school, and to continuing to think about some of our student choice opportunities that we have. Data to inform practice is another big one, really just trying to use data in smart ways to inform teaching and help our kids. Social emotional learning and safety of students and staff, so obviously this is going to be tough this year, both. There are a lot of initiatives on the social emotional side going on in all our schools and partners that we have, Stanford, Michigan. And then with COVID card calls, as we discussed tonight, this is going to be an ongoing process. Security, which continues to be of extreme importance, and I mean security from a physical security sense with our emergency management, our security team that we have, and just continuing to make sure that our kids and our faculty staff are secure. Cybersecurity is also an important element of this, especially as we rely on more and everything digital. And then we have, of course, physical accountability and communications, so there are listed things to focus on this year that are specific regarding the budget of the long-term outlook, leadership development and succession planning, and then finally advocacy. So that's the totality of what we came up with, but I hope it helps to questions, time stops.
Scott, you know, I see the work that Jason and the administration put into this. I just have a request that we carry this to the next meeting.
Sure.
It's been a lot of material, and I think this deserves a fuller discussion, I think, given time. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to table this for the next meeting.
Yeah, that's completely fine. Anybody have your comments tonight? But we will definitely table it, and we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll still have plenty of time to finalize and approve it and fill out the illustrations we do. Who else? Okay. All right, we're going to go to staff reports, so.
All right. Here are my notes. Second. Yeah, so the board, do you want to? It's chaos. Thank you. If I am in the way, I think the only choice that I have is to sit on the floor. That's okay. Thank you, L C.
Yes.
All right. So first, just a Board of Education meeting tonight, typically the superintendent does a report on the state of the schools. First of all, I would welcome all of our students, faculty, staff, and administrators back to school. I am happy that all students are going to be in the class, we're happy to be having hybrid instruction at the middle school and the high school. Elementary students will all be sharing their classrooms together. Our safety measures will still remain in place with masking indoors, obviously. Social distancing, free view of the possible buses, buses, we are allowed to put the kids next to each other, and with the new exception for students with quarantining, oh, can you hear me, everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah? With the exception for students regarding quarantining, which I'll talk about in a few moments, we are able to have kids sitting on buses together, and we're not going to have to quarantine wide swaths of children as they are masked. We're going to keep our cleaning protocols, which really, whether or not they were ever needed for the COVID experience, children need to have clean hands, we put these clean hand stations in everywhere. It's benefiting just generally the public good. And also the cleaning protocols in our buses, just to keep germs away from kids in general is a good practice. And contact tracing changes, I'll speak about in a few minutes, and then anticipated COVID-19 weekly testing. I am the president of the Southern Westchester Superintendents Association, and I partnered with another superintendent to work with Westchester County Department of Health to make sure that every school in Westchester County had the opportunity for COVID testing, for a gateway testing at the beginning of the school year, and for testing throughout the year for anyone who wants it. It's voluntary. There are people in the communities who want to get themselves checked and want to be sure that they are not COVID positive, and the county is supporting that work in every single school in Westchester. They've done an incredible amount of work, and superintendents are grateful to them for that. So starting the second week after we get back, the COVID testing that will be voluntary for staff and students from now until at least the December holidays will be managed and covered by Westchester County Department of Health. Fortunately, they contracted with the same company that we used last year, so this is not going to be a change for our students. We were very interested as superintendents in having saliva testing, not having nasal swab testing, I just find that intrusive for kids and didn't want them to remember that experience. It being voluntary, any parent who thinks their child is struggling or doesn't want to do it, does not have to feel that they have to, but it is there as another preventative measure. We have, oh, sorry, I'm not in present mood, am I? There you go. We have CDC guidance that was updated to us in the beginning of August, and it talked about indoor masking regardless of vaccination status, especially if we're in an area of substantial or high transmission, which we are. They call for the three feet of distance, screening, testing, ventilation, hand washing, all of that, and the same thing about buses. This is what the CDC has currently sent out about vaccinated people with Delta, and they're talking a lot about variant breakthroughs. So if you look on the right, and you see that during original COVID, you had an individual potentially infecting two other people, the individual to the right of that is the Delta variant, and what the CDC is saying, causing more infections and spreading faster than early forms of the COVID virus. So we have looked at many studies on the Delta variant, and I can share this with people on Friday, if anybody wants to come and meet or another time I will meet with you. Particularly, the highlighted study is what was sent to me from Dr. Thomas Murray from Yale in Haven Children's Hospital. This is a study that was published in the morbidity and mortality weekly report at the end of August of this year, and it is a study based on a classroom layout and a seating chart. The top blue is, happens to be the teacher's desk, the teacher who was COVID positive and took a mask off, COVID positive with the Delta variant, and took a mask off to read a book to children. And these are the children that became infected with COVID in that class, every child in the class was masked. And then what they set out after that, if you look at the dark blue dots, those are the children who had COVID in the classroom after the teacher, and then the resulting people in the number of days up to twenty days after that. This is the research that we're being presented with, from the CDC and from the Yale Department of Immunology. Governor Hochul, we've talked about this already, and New York State Department of Health have mandated that effective immediately, we do have masks indoors. There is something that is more beneficial to our school districts, though, if you look at the exception. In the K to twelve indoor classroom setting, kids who are masked within three to six feet of an infected student, who normally would have to quarantine, no longer have to quarantine. So that is, at least we are trying our hardest to keep every child in school every day, and I felt like at least that was responsive to some of the things that we've been telling the county and telling the state, which is that we have not seen transmissions in schools with kids who are masked. So that being said, they looked into that, and this is exactly the kind of conversation I was having with you before, about bringing forward knowledge and sharing that knowledge. It resulted, for the most part, in schools sharing that no transmissions were happening, and now we don't have to send all these kids home. Every child we sent home last year on quarantine did not come down with COVID. And we expressed that to the state, and we gave them our numbers, and that's where we see the difference. I'll go back a slide. We do have some quarantine guidance and remote instruction in place. It's going to be a little bit different than it was last year. Last year, kids would, you know, choose at the middle school to be remote or be in school. This year, if a student is quarantined by the district for K to five, we will notify the, parents will notify the principal by twelve o'clock that day, who can put into motion the teachers, having the child engage remotely the next day. And the same thing at the high school. The high school and middle school kids, however, will remote right back into the classroom, provided we receive something by twelve o'clock saying they're quarantined or have taken a COVID test. We will have them remote in the next day. Elementary level, we're going to continue, we had a very successful last year, a retired librarian who came on as the quarantine teacher. The teachers put the information into Google Classroom, and she, as an experienced teacher, walks the kids through their day and the studies, and gives individual attention to the kids while they're quarantined. I'm not expecting the wide swaths of quarantine like we had before. And last, just to look at our schools, Coman Hill, Wampus, H.C. Crittenton, Byron Hills High School, the Board of Education tonight went to look at each building as they customarily do before we go into this board meeting to start the school year, and they evaluate our programs. We have a lot more kids this year than we were anticipating. If you look at the bottom, we were anticipating two thousand two hundred and fifty-six on the bottom right. We are having two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight students, so the demographers' projections for this year were under. We know that there's been quite a few home sales that have occurred and new kids coming to the district, registering at the district office every day, so that is accounting for those larger numbers, probably still will increase. Coman Hill Elementary School, we went to visit, this is what a typical classroom would look like. This happens to be a kindergarten classroom where kids are enjoying time with other kids, no plastic barriers, these are the things that we learned through this past year. Our libraries are back open as libraries, kids will be in their gyms for gym, or mostly outside for that matter. Our teachers really did an incredible job of having as much outside time as they can. Last year, even though we were utilizing our gyms for classrooms, the PE teachers told us that they preferred to have the kids outside. It's an opportunity by the, for unmasking. At Wampus, we had quite a bit to see, they put in some new playground equipment, some of the old playground equipment is still there, but some new playground equipment, they did some changes to the roof, there was a lot of actual construction projects that went on this summer. Thanks to the PTSA, we will, at that entrance of the bus entrance, we will be having an awning installed in the next two weeks or so to that entrance. It's a new concrete slab that goes into the school, we're going to be putting benches there, we are going to have the covering on there, that's also going to serve as another outdoor classroom space. I think COVID or not, one thing that we've really learned is how much kids are enjoying being outside for their learning experience, and that's a good takeaway that we want to continue in any kind of learning space we can, we will. Particularly at Wampus, the B H E F donated a whole space in a courtyard, which includes decking and sunshet sales over it, seats about eighty students. Anytime we can do that, we are trying to make that attempt. Crittenton Commons was developed this summer, it's pretty exciting, if you haven't had a chance, please get over there. This is another donation by the B H E F, and it is an outdoor multi-use court that was constructed over the summer with some amphitheater-style seating next to it, perfect for classes to go outside, perfect for these kids to go outside for lunch and recess, and just to enjoy the outdoors. The seating arrangement that is there does have a concrete slab underneath it, so it can be used for classroom spaces and for instruction as well. Although we do, we have a courtyard at Crittenton that was super overutilized last year, an outdoor courtyard, we'll continue with that. Our homecoming schedule, which is an exciting time in Byron Hills for these kids, we have starting on Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, with our homecoming game. The games will be delineated later, but it goes from Tuesday to Saturday. We welcome the community to come to homecoming. We're excited for our kids to have as next to normal of an experience as they can, and we will not be having masks outside. What, huh?
No.
Ah! Hmm. That's what I do with my phone. I haven't moved. Want me to turn it off and back on?
Something else could change. I think it changed better.
I can assure you that nobody comes to my aid like this in my life on a regular basis. It's not turning on at all. Oh, there you go. Let's see. Hooray! All right, back in action. And finally, our focus, our spectrum, all of the ways that we try to showcase our kids are going to continue this year. We are encouraging as much participation as we can in our schools safely with parents. We know that it has been school last- We know that it has been, school last year was like a black box to parents, not having opportunities to go in. We did have our orientations at the elementary level. Kindergarten parents followed their children into their classrooms, were able to experience that. I know for our back-to-school nights are something that's going to involve a lot of individuals, that we are really looking to do virtually, because it doesn't make sense for us to convene all of these people at the same time. My superintendent groups are not convening in person either. Any, anything that we can do to stay safe for the kids and focus on instruction and having them in school every single day is something that we're going to be doing. But that said, we are trying our hardest. I know at the high school, they had the parent orientation, to have parents come in and see the schools and visit with the teachers. We will also have parent-teacher conferences that will be occurring in school if parents choose or remotely if parents choose. So, just some things that we learned, and that is it for my report.
All right, that was a lot. Thank you. Any other staff reports?
Yes, I have a, sorry. I have a brief staff report, two items. First is looking at the New York State testing program. We did test students in grades three through eight ELA in mathematics last year and at the end of last school year, and we had, most of our families did not take Regents exams that year, so we had very few Regents exams to report out on. We have not yet received the New York State testing data. We usually receive that in July. State Ed just put out a memo a few weeks ago indicating that we will get the state testing data mid to late September. I will look at that data, do my usual presentation to the board once I receive that assessment data. Second item is talking about the summer curriculum projects. Summertime is usually a rest time for teachers, and certainly last summer, our teachers deserved a long summer vacation. However, we were active once again, as we typically are in the summer, with many teacher professional learning opportunities. I'll just summarize a few, a few of the projects. One was looking at the use of time. This was directed toward our middle school and high school teachers, given our shift in our master schedules where we have longer blocks of time. We had teachers come together for two weeks to work on strategies, to redesign lessons, to take into consideration longer blocks of time. This is strategies like the use of rubrics, the use of activity lists, students' self-journaling, and then designing problem- and project-based activities. Teachers came out of those two weeks, having practiced a lot of those skills and designing very specific units at the beginning of the year to be able to implement. They will become our leaders, and we'll continue with coaching with those teachers throughout the year, and they will turn key and help other teachers as we go into those, to the school year. Our chairs and directors, who oversee the curriculum in grades six through 12, designed very content-specific workshops, specifically this year. Given last year, not all of the content may have been addressed in the same way, so we brought together teams in all of the content areas to look at what was actually taught last year, and looking at the next course and how we may spiral and integrate some of those content areas into this year's curriculum. We will assure that our students will be prepared with all of the learning standards and the content before they graduate from our schools. And I want to thank our chairs for putting that together. It's a lot of work to do with teachers over the summer. And then a few things at the elementary grades. We have our ELA grade-level representatives getting together to look at a scope and sequence in literacy, and we've been, last year, we adopted a literacy program, so we had some online content in case we had to go remote. We used that literacy curriculum last year. We are going to pick up with our study that we began pre-pandemic. So, we will continue this year with that same program we did last year, but we will also pick up the study of our previous literacy programs and frameworks that we were looking at, and do a deep analysis and do our due diligence on looking at a literacy curriculum, and do some piloting at the end of this school year, and be making a decision either at the end of this year or into next year. And we had our data team got together to look at and develop and identify common assessments. Because we didn't have the state test two years ago, and we don't always want to rely on just state tests as one mechanism to know how students are learning, we are making sure we have common assessments in our content area in the elementary grades, and that we have a system to look at and analyze that assessment data. So, our data team was busy reviewing that information. And then finally, our cyber camp was, we had our cyber camp as usual, where teachers learned and studied the various technology that we have across the district and wrote lessons using new technology, and innovative and engaging ways for our students when they come back to school. We have a lot of technology to share that was adopted during the pandemic. Some of those tools were really valuable, not that we will rely on just using screen time, but it is a tool to help students and engage students in learning. That's my report. Scott, thank you.
And then we spoke just last week in regionalizing, you see, about this state testing issue and delay again to September, so it's something that's on the agenda for the future.
Great, thank you, because even getting the data in July is late. So, we were pushing to try to get that state testing data earlier.
I can't take that long.
Right, I know. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Any other? All right, so that brings us to board reports. I think the only thing I have to share is that through the Westchester Public School Boards Association, there'll be an opportunity to do just monthly connections with other boards in the county, just as everybody grapples with many difficult issues these days, and we can share best practices, so keep everyone updated on that. And anybody have any, anything to report on? The committees are not familiar, so they may not be.
A question about the BHEF, will we go sign their schedules usually?
That's a.
I will take care of that.
Take care of that. Okay, for Katrina and myself. Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, just on that point, actually, just two things with the tour that we did today. I mean, I think with every year that goes by, it becomes more apparent to me that we have two people to thank for the state of our buildings, you know, one of which is Steve Thompson and his crew, who worked all summer on these capital projects and procured material that was hard to procure because there's just all kinds of supply chain issues going on in our, in our country and our world. The other is BHEF, because if you walk through the schools, and especially with all this outdoor space, I mean, we really are thankful to, like, the years of gifts from this community to BHEF to make all that happen. I think it's going to be useful this year and the years to come, so.
Scott, you raised the point I was going to raise, and I just want to flesh it out a bit. Because there are these supply chain issues, and they don't seem abating in the near future. I would like to hear, and doesn't mean next week agreement, sometime in the near future from Steve, whether or not this will affect any of the capital programs we have, and whether any of them have to be reorganized, whether the timing will be affected, but I'm reading in the industry how the supply chain has truly been disrupted, may impact our capital programs, and the sooner we plan for it, probably the better it will be. So, I would ask that be communicated to with Steve, and then get back to, and then get back to you, Kelly, and Rebecca. Thank you.
Makes sense.
Also, a big shout to PTSA, they also beautify our schools with welcome signs. We really are a taping community, and we are excited to welcome back the students, the faculty, and staff, so that beautifies their schools.
Absolutely.
And to the boosters for our new sign at the high school, our sign replacement.
The high school as well, yeah.
We really have a great community.
It's a strong sports season. There are a lot of kids that have tried out for, across the board.
The fall sports season sees the largest participation of the year, and just knowing, speaking to some of the coaches, the turnout numbers are high, very high, where, which is great. It would be great for the homecoming, it's great for the school, but some of the coaches were surprised how high the number is worth in their respective sports, so that's just all.
Anyone else? All right, then on 13.1, communications to the board. The board received and could share with everyone several emails regarding mask mandate. There was an inquiry that we got just about the logistics of public meeting participation. Anyone else have anything to report on communications? All right, with that, approval of the board minutes. So, I'm going to do these separately. So, first, I would ask for a motion to approve the July 13th re-our meeting board minutes.
Some move.
Second.
All favor? And then I would ask for a motion on August 19th to approve those minutes.
Some move. Second.
All, right, for, so, all, all favor. I know some of us weren't there and may not want to vote, but for all in favor first. Okay, that looks like we have the majority, and then I'm going to abstain. And does anybody else, does anybody else want to abstain?
No, I vote for it.
All right. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
All favor? All right, that's it.
Good luck first day to school.
All right, yep, good luck to everyone for the first day. Appreciate everybody coming.
Parents, you came out. I will be available Friday, whether you just show up or let me know in your van, either way is fine, I'll be still working. At the district office, if you want to come, I know that I have an appointment with one of the parents here the following week, and I'll honor that too. And if Friday, if 4:30 doesn't work for you, please do reach out to me, and we will work together. I have a few other parents who weren't here tonight, who are eager to get into that work together. Thank you for the respectful dialogue. I know that your emotions are weighing heavy right now, and I understand that, but thank you so much for coming tonight and for sharing your thoughts about your children.
And I appreciate that, too. As I said at the beginning, I think we all are, and for the same reason, which is we care about our kids and we care about the kids of the community, so appreciate your comments. We listen carefully, for sure. I know this is going to be a dialogue. It's going to be a long year to get through, but we also have a lot of exciting things in the schools going on, so let's hope that all of our kids have the best experience possible, and we look forward to continuing dialogue with you.
Nice to see you in person.